Call the meeting of the City Council of the Town of Atherton to order at 7:00 PM on October 16th. And we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Dobby?
Here.
Councilmember Dobby?
Here.
Mayor Perry, please?
Here.
Mayor Lewis?
Here. We're all here in the calendar floor. We only have four members on the deas. We're holding an election November 5th. Everybody vote. There's three candidates running for this election and so we'll soon have a fifth. Now's the time for any public comments. If anyone wants to say public comments, here we go. Something that is not on deas.
Rick Degolia, 84 Clay Drive. I just wanted to formally advise the council about this issue regarding Surf Air that has come up. Surf Air is a small airline flying in from into San Carlos Airport from Burbank and from Santa Barbara. And a number of residents who are in the direct flight path in the Middlefield area, including Lindenwood, and the flight comes directly over Ensignal School, they're very concerned about the noise. I've been in that area when those planes have come over and they're quite noisy. So, we had a meeting with Surf Air and the San Carlos Airport officials on Friday. And they were, both San Carlos and Surf Air, were very concerned about the community concern. And there was a petition that was signed by nearly 200 people. So, I know that there's not much that the town can do about it, but I thought that the council should be formally aware of the issue. And I believe there's going to be a lot more activity around the issue. Ultimately, the goal is to try to change the flight path that the FAA has approved into San Carlos Airport. But that's a very big deal. It will take a considerable period of time. And there's no assurance that it can be done. Surf Air will attempt to reduce the noise problem, but there's no assurance that that's going to satisfy people.
Thank you. Any other public?
Could I hand a couple of hands to you? The council members, hands to your side.
Okay. Thank you. It's a business question. We do have one more.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Paula Wallace. I'm a member of Bay Area for Clean Environment. I'm here to talk about the vested rights issue and Lehigh, formerly known as Kaiser Permanente, the big cement facility just in the hills west of us. The cities of Los Altos, Los Altos Hills and Potobal Valley have all joined Mid Peninsula Open Space District on an amicus brief supporting Bay's lawsuit against the county, which granted vested rights for much of Lehigh's property against their own staff's recommendations. If you look at the map, this blue outline on the jagged space here is what staff recommended was vested for this huge mining facility. But the orange highlighted area of all these houses is what the county board supervisors granted Lehigh. Now, there is an EIR approved for this facility, but it's only for the reclamation after the mining operation has completed. Not, there's no EIR for the actual mining operation. And that's because under the vested rights decision, there is no EIR and no discretionary approval to mine the lands. Thus, no EIR needed to mine. And the county's decision forever gives up the ability to analyze the impact of mining. So, that's why Bay sued the county to overturn this poor decision, we feel. And we're asking local residents to support Mid Peninsula Open Space District's amicus brief for this. So, how does this affect the residents of Atherton? Well, we all share the same air basin. And strip mining causes a great deal of particulate matter to be dispersed into our air. The limestone from this mine is particularly high in mercury, higher than the average limestone deposits around the nation. That limestone is cooked at incredibly high temperatures and is dispersed into air and gets into our waterways and our reservoirs. Thank you so much. Appreciate the time.
Any other public, members of the public?
Hi, my name's Tim Brand and I'm also a member of Bay Area for Clean Environment. I'm here also to warn you about what the future may have in store for the hillsides near your city and encourage you to consider supporting Mid Peninsula in their collective effort to submit an amicus brief. And I have a couple quotes here I want to read from the county staff when they were approving the Reclamation Plan Amendment. First one is, says, "Because the applicant has a vested right to extract materials, the only limitation on the applicant's right to mine within the vested rights area is the physical extent of the commercially viable mineral deposit that can be extracted safely." Another quote from the same document says, "The project area contains approximately 640 acres of existing or planned surface mine activities related to mineral extraction, overburdened storage, roads, exploration areas, and ancillary facilities." The county has determined, well, the mining operations have been determined by the county to be illegal, nonconforming use. Consequently, land use entitlement is not required from the county. In addition to the impacts from legal activities there, I want to give you an example of some illegal activities, which had by and large been the bigger part of their mining operation. If you look at a Google Earth image of the area, which I wish I had tonight, and I hope you look up, there's a wide brown dead zone about three miles long, about a mile across. And most of that was constructed illegally, according to the state mining board. Perhaps most egregiously was the large waste dump called the East Material Storage Area, which I want to give you an example, use as an example here. This was built outside of the approved reclamation plan and on property recently purchased by them. After our group got 30,000 signatures on a petition to the state asking that they enforce the law, the state finally sent a 30-day notice to Lehigh. But Lehigh sued in court and the state settled with them behind closed doors. The state was threatening to enforce AB 3098, which says they can't sell to public agencies if they're not in compliance. This agreement, behind closed doors, required that Lehigh get an amendment to the rec plan approved on a schedule. This meant that they were desperate to get a vested right in East Material Storage Area, despite the fact that they really had no right to that. But this is what the county staff said about that in fact. "With respect to the proposed East Material Storage Area, the county geologist did not identify any quarrying-related disturbances as of 1948. Moreover, this land was sold to a separate corporation and developed, used intensively for metals manufacturing and related activities." So, the impact from these mining activities can be minimized if Lehigh only gets the vested status they're entitled to. Permit conditions can be applied, which improve enforcement. And I hope that you'll consider putting this on your agenda because this decision is permanent and the mining activities there will last for centuries. Thank you very much.
Any other members of the public want to speak?
Good evening. Christine Waldron, Mid 71 Heather Drive. And I just wanted to speak briefly to the traffic incident that happened on the 27th of September at the intersection of Glenwood and Middlefield. And our family was kind of thrown a bit into chaos that morning, obviously with the events of that accident. My kids both bike to Hillview. They depart out of the main gate. And I don't mean any disrespect to the police. I think it was handled fabulously. But I think in the future, I would just like to see an improvement on the notification that happens. Some volunteers from the community or otherwise, we'd be happy to staff locations to help people route around this incident. I know families from Ensignal. One mother encountered a group of kids that had been biking along Middlefield that were stopped because they couldn't continue along the route, crying. They're little kids, you know, they're only eight. And they, this mother waited with this group until another group came along with a parent in it and they could get them to school. I didn't receive any formal notifications, despite checking and Googling to see what was going on until 8:50 in the morning. And that's well after school had started. My oldest son left at 7:10 and disappeared into another, he bikes with a friend. I guess they figured out how to get out. My husband left with my other son later in the morning at 7:45 and was again turned away, but without really any information, came home. They got in the car to drive to school. You know, we have this great notification system. I know about mountain lions on Marsh or on Walsh. And, you know, I know how to lock my car because we have burglaries in Palo Alto. I just think we should now, before another incident happens, and hopefully there won't be one, just have some strategic planning and figure out how we can handle these incidents so that they don't impact people quite so much.
Appreciate your comments, Christine. Any other members of the public wish to speak? Yes, sir.
I apologize. I would like to give something to the clerk of the city council for item number 18. I haven't been here before and I don't see the clerk of the city council. So, if someone would be kind enough to just, I see now, thank you very much.
Just give it to me, man.
Give you two items and I actually will have a packet for each of you, a copy of each one of those.
That's good, thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak at this time? Seeing none, I'll move on. We go back, report out of closed session, our city attorney.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, two matters were heard in closed session regarding potential legal matters. The city council received reports on each of them and no action was taken.
Okay. We'll move on to our city manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I just wanted to report on a couple of items within the report. You've got the bulk of the report, I'm not going to read through in detail. One is the Community Center Advisory Committee has sent out notifications to the community about these neighborhood outreach meetings. There are five coming up. The first is on Monday, October 28th at 87 Patricia Drive. The second is on Tuesday, October 29th at 99 Alejandra. The third is on Wednesday, October 30th at 96 Mountain Vernon Lane. These are all from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. The fourth is on Sunday, November 3rd at 420 Walsh Road from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM. And the last is on Tuesday, November 5th at 173 Hawthorne from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. You're encouraged to go to one within your neighborhood based on your postcard, but you can't make that one feel free to attend any of the others and provide your input into this very important project. And there will also be another one on November 8th at another address that I don't quite have yet, but I'll, we'll put that out there.
Is that 66 Atean?
66 Atean, okay, thank you. Also, within the city manager's report is the Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan Stakeholder Meeting Minutes from the last meeting. You've got that detailed before you. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but before we leave the city manager's report, I'd like to turn it over to the chief to talk about the Middlefield incident and the possibility of a reward for that incident.
We need a longer cord.
I just want a microphone.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, as you're all well aware, we had a couple of fatal collisions and the one in particular that we're talking about is unsolved. And we've put out requests to the community if they had any information. We've kind of run out of leads in that it's a hit and run. And we're looking at possibly eliciting money from various groups in the private sector to put together a reward, to see if we might be able to get somebody to come to work there and offer up information. Is it possible for public comments?
On the city manager's report?
Yes.
We were just going to see if there was any more reporting to be made, but if...
Well, if there is, I'll wait.
I have no more reports to make. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anything from staff?
I would just say that the CCAC meeting this time was, I think there were a few problems as far as the time was gone. And I think we want to make sure we don't confuse everybody because it was a starting time of 3 o'clock, a starting time of 4 o'clock. And eventually we sorted it all out, but I think, you know, next time, I see we can clean it up a little bit.
So, the only thing, I brought this up to city manager earlier today, but, you know, I was in the park, regularly in the park, but specifically on the 4th of October and there was, somebody had taken over the whole meadow area. Brought in a caterer, set up about 20 tables and no other residents could use it. And I noticed that they weren't on the list as somebody using the park. So, I realized people can have picnics and things like that, but when caterers are brought in and bringing in, you know, tables and chairs and taking over the whole meadow area, I think it's really inappropriate that they're not paying a fee and actually reserving the space so that people don't get turned around because there are regular groups there. So, I know we're going to have later in the session, something about event management and somebody to try and coordinate that. But I do think that, and I've asked the city manager to really, we need to do a better job, I think, of policing this, so to speak, and possibly even just put signs up. If you're going to take up more than two or three tables, that you need to make a reservation because we just can't have the park cordoned off by whoever gets there first at 8 o'clock in the morning and then they take over, really essentially, over a third of the park. And I think that it was inappropriate and unfortunate.
That's really a good point, Councilmember Waldron. I think that with the event coordinator to be at the park and manage that, that will be remedied. I think that that can be, you know, addressed. I think our staff is not in charge of being able to manage all of that, you know, right now. They outsourced to contractors. Any, would you like to add something?
I just want to make a couple of comments related to, first of all, I want to thank you on the notification and giving the additional information out to the public related to the multiple number of sources you can have for notification for emergencies, i.e. Samhita County's alert system, our alert system, as well as Menlo Park's alert system, as well as Redwood City's alert system. And I'd like to thank you for, if this is a learning curve, I think, you know, I think that Friday was a very unusual day and I'm sure that, listening to Christine's comments earlier, but I really want to thank you about the notification of the recent accident we had with the tracks the day before yesterday. I think that it was really good that we got information out as quick as we could and we were able to produce it out there. So, you know, we're working on it and I think this is, you know, an evolving method for us to get information out to the public as well. Thank you, George.
I just wanted to ask one more thing with the, maybe with Steve here, Steve. The event services, the MCE budget for the park. It shows on your chart that we are expending money for setup and then the detail of all the different events that have been taking place. But is there revenue attached to that? Do we have another chart that we can kind of compare? You know, like for this period, we spent $11,360. Was there, for these events and setups, was there revenue that was associated with that?
Are you talking about in the manager's report? Yeah, I actually have that, that I presented to the Park and Parks Commission. I can easily forward that to George. It was a separate page and it didn't really fit in that document.
It didn't fit. Okay, thank you. Greg?
Greg Conlon, 43 Virginia. You know, three things. One, the November 5th meeting of the Town Senator Committee, it's election night and I just think it would be inappropriate to have a meeting on election night to interfere with people going to the polls. So, it's a suggestion. The second thing is on the reward. I would think that unless the legal council advises otherwise, that the city could use its emergency funds to fund, to start a fund for the reward, $5,000 or $10,000. And the last thing is the CalTrains. I don't know the details on that incident, but if there's any incident that was an accident rather than a suicide, I would think that you would go to the CalTrains meeting next month and express your dissatisfaction and call for some sort of action to improve the safety. But we've had two fatalities within a mile in the last month. And I just think the city should express their dissatisfaction and lack of action by CalTrains.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public want to make a statement about the city manager's report? Seeing none, we will move on to our consent calendar. In the consent calendar, it's items 8 through 16. However, we're going to poll number 15 to the regular agenda. And we will address item number 15 before item number 19 in the regular agenda. So, I'll bring it back to council. Any members of the council wish to comment or poll on any of the consent items?
I'd like to discuss item 13 and 16. Thank you.
So, you want those polled?
Yeah.
I, I want, I have a comment on item 12.
You have a comment on item 12?
You know, how did we decide on those streets? Because as, for instance, on James Avenue, already been done. I don't see it here and it's one of the major streets, so. Why was it like that?
Yes, there are a number of streets that have radar surveys. These are only the ones that were expiring. So, we, you know, if the council's interested, we can certainly provide the entire list of streets and I can't remember exactly. But it's, those all paid, so I'm thinking there's probably close to 30 streets. But these 11 were done just because by law, in order to continue with radar enforcement, you need to update it every...
So, my question is, have the others been done to do the radar on the others?
Yes.
I just have a quick question on 12, since we're on that topic. A few, quite a few of the speed surveys indicated that we're going to reduce in excess of 5 miles per hour, which is below the 85% target. Is there any, does that affect us at all?
No. What is, what we're able to do is basically set the speed at the nearest 5 mile an hour below the 85th. But then, given, you know, residential area visibility issues, we have the ability to reduce it an additional 5 miles per hour. And that's why there were, I think, two streets out of the 11 where we did use that to get the speed limit down to 25 miles an hour.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay. So, can I, is there any member of the public wish to comment or poll any consent item? Seeing none, I'll call for a motion to approve the consent calendar except 8, number 8 through 16, except for number 16 and number 13. And number 15.
So, move it.
Second.
Second, so we have a motion from...
Do so move in two seconds.
You can sort that out, can't you? Yes, Reese and Dobby. Okay. And we call for motion, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So, we will deal with items number 13 and number 16 at the end of the hearing. Okay? We'll move on to our public hearing. Public hearing is the introduction of an ordinance to a man titled 15 of the Atherton Municipal Code adopted by reference, the 2013 California Building Standards Code retaining the existing modifications and ratifying fire regulations as adopted by the Menlo Park Fire Protection District. Committee Services Director, Matt Koshalagi, will present.
And actually, I'd like to have Brett Hale, your chief building official, provide the separate quote. I'll let you pick, all right?
Good evening. Brett Hale, the official of the town of Atherton. Madam Mayor, members of the council. The purpose of this item is to introduce by title the scheduled public hearing of the attached ordinance to adopt by reference the 2013 California Codes and ratify the Menlo Park Fire Regulations, which are the fire regulations for the town of Atherton. This is a routine local code adoption process that occurs every three years following a process that the state of California goes through to amend and adopt updated building regulations. The state's triannual adoption process is required by state law. And resulting 2013 California Codes were published on July 1st, 2013, and will take effect statewide on January 1st, 2014. The proposed ordinance is necessary to avoid conflicts with the new codes by updating the municipal code to correctly reference the 2013 California Codes. And since the town currently has more restrictive requirements for the installation of fire sprinkler systems, this adoption is needed to carry forward those same requirements. The proposed ordinance does not include any new or more restrictive requirements at the local level. The adoption has been discussed at the monthly development roundtable meeting where no concerns were raised. Representatives of the Menlo Park Fire are also here to answer any fire-related questions. That concludes my presentation and I'm available to answer any questions.
So, I'll bring it back to council for any clarifying or technical questions that you may want to ask the building official.
Yeah, some time ago, a few years ago, I think the Fire Board recommended that anybody that did a certain amount of remodeling had to put sprinklers in the whole home. I've got to say, I read a lot of this stuff and it's quite lengthy, but I hope that that's, is that the case still?
Yes, there's no proposed changes. That would still be the case.
Okay, well, I don't really know what that, that one is.
I could ask Fire Department, they can talk to you about the retro building ordinance.
Bob Loggins, Menlo Park Fire District. So, the changes are, the sprinkler ordinance are exactly the same as they've been since 2007? 2007? If you do 50% remodel, it triggers a review from the fire district, which in turn will trigger the sprinklers.
Okay. That's all I need to know.
So, it's not a small remodel of like adding, you know, an extra bedroom or something?
No, up to 50%.
Right.
Yeah, additional alteration, remodel.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got a couple of comments on that. First off, I think that I read through the Menlo Park Fire District items. I guess I took exception to the fact that I'm reading it and it says, hey, here's what you need to do, except for Atherton, you need to do this, which is at a higher level. And I really don't think that that was appropriate. Secondly, I think that the issue about the 50% actually disadvantages people with the smaller homes that want to do a remodel to improve the value of their property. I don't think that that's appropriate. You know, a square foot size might be more appropriate, but 50% of a house that's, say, over in Loughton Park or on Park Avenue, where they're 2,500 square feet and they do something and they touch their family room, remodel their kitchen and maybe put in a new bathroom, it could be 50% of the space. And so, they have to put sprinklers in their home versus somebody who has a 12,000 or 14,000 square foot house and they're remodeling the kitchen and they're only touching 5% or 10%. So, I really think, and by the way, this is an issue in many, many of the communities. And I think it is unfair to the smaller homeowners and I think it should be revisited. And I would appreciate it if we wouldn't revisit it and take a hard look at all these exceptions that say, except for Atherton, because I don't think that we're special. I think that some of the provisions that you have in your, in your code, such as addressing the access on the flag lots, very appropriate, very appropriate, okay? But the other ones, such as the one I've just discussed, I think, you know, I have to take strong exception to. And as the new codes, I see, you know, you've signed off on the codes, I guess, on the, in the September agreement or in your September meeting. I don't recall there was a public notice. I don't recall seeing any sort of public outreach. And I never saw any sort of council report, nor did I ever see anything from any member of the board reaching out to people and asking them to come to the meeting. Now, we have public hearings and we talk to people all the time and we send notices out to all the residents so they can come and express their concerns. You know, the fire district, I don't see them doing that.
Okay. The first issue about being more restrictive for the town of Atherton, it's actually not. It's partially how it was written because Menlo Park was an exception to the ordinance. When it came out, actually, East Palo Alto was more restrictive. They asked for 40%. We have now brought them up to where you were, which was 50%. Because 40% was more cumbersome and especially smaller houses there. Last night, we attended Menlo Park and we received very well at the 50%. So, Atherton is not singled out at the 50% mark. The 50% along with the building department is a trigger when you've done excessive amounts of work. So, again, if you're doing a kitchen remodel, a bathroom remodel, those things are not designed at all to trigger this. This is when you take apart the house. In most cases, people who are not living in the house anymore. So, that's where the 50% came from. It also was triggered again back in 2004, 2005, up to 2007 because of hydrant spacing and water flow issues. So, where it all came up was there. And so, now the code requires you have X amount of water, minimum 1,500 gallons. water, minimum 1,500 gallons for a 3,600 square foot home, and a hydrant within 600 feet apart, so 300 feet to your dwelling. Working with Cal Water, the council here and everything else, we put it together so it was a real burden for a homeowner and an owner to put a hydrant in versus the cost of sprinklers in their home, and that's the only thing we can do, is add a hydrant or you have to mitigate it by the code. That's not a Menlo Park requirement, that's a state requirement. So, the council said, okay, we can work together, not have homeowners put in fire hydrants and do the sprinklers, is how it was developed for that. If that answers your question?
Well, I still think that, I would, I would request that the fire district reconsider, I guess on the smaller homes, maybe you have a size limitation or a square foot limitation or a percentage, I think that that would be fairer.
And we do, the state requires all new single-family dwellings to receive sprinklers regardless of...
What I'm talking about is people remodeling more.
Understood, and we, and we did that, and that was discussed in the...
Do you want to ask a question?
Yes.
On that same topic, do we have any idea how the rest of the cities within the peninsula, their percentages are recompensated?
We actually do, I have it with me, if you'd like, I'll give it to you.
Thank you.
Comparison, draft report.
Yeah, thank you. I'm walking back, is there any exception to sprinklers, so say, for example, I have a flat home, flat roof, and putting sprinklers in is probably not, I mean, too easy.
We have some of those and they're doing it with the new construction also, and they're doing an exposed, or what they're also doing to get the R rate of the ceiling is putting a flat ceiling on top of that with typically a rigid installation, so they're using plastic pipe for the installation of these systems, number one, so it's not metal pipe if it's on the roof. And they insulate and encapsulate the whole thing in a new roof, typically adding about six inches in height to the flat roof. So, it's actually very simple, it's quicker and cheaper to do it on the flat roof if they're doing a new roof to get the R value, Title 24 requirements?
Okay, so it's, you know, some people like the aesthetics of a certain look, and I think that...
Absolutely.
To modify it too much.
We understand that, and we've had challenges, and I'm going to use the word fun to get them, be creative, there's ways to get it done, absolutely.
So, if I could ask you one additional question, so, on the, sorry, on the, on the sprinklers, just in case, because I've been asked by several people, if there is a fire hydrant that's within the 300 feet, then that, that gives them a pass on the...
Not with the ordinance, it does not give them a pass, so that is a one-size-fits-all which goes to your topic of square footage.
Okay.
How, so how does it work and is it fair to all? And again, it goes back to the 2007 ordinance where this council said, okay, this, this fits. Because of, at the 50% range, you've pretty much taken apart the house, and typically in Atherton, if they're below the, if they're below 50%, we don't even see the plans. So, again, as far as the joint venture with Cal Water and the town, to do an, a burden of a hydrant...
No, I thought you said if they could either pay for a hydrant or the sprinkler.
At that time, the state, so the state requires you have X amount of water and a hydrant at this distance, period. And if you don't, how do you make that work?
Okay.
Put in a hydrant, and now you have a flag lot that's 200 feet deep, and you may have to put a hydrant in your flag lot.
Thank you, I just...
So, can we ask the, any members of the public have any questions or comments for the fire district at this time for this ordinance? Okay, we'll bring it back to council. And we'll call for a...
Introduction is direct. It's above, introduction is direct city ordinance. It's not an adoption of the ordinance, it's setting a public hearing, but that requires a motion.
Okay, so can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Councilmember Dobby makes the motion, and...
I will second.
Vice Mayor Reese second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposing?
Yeah, I am.
We have one opposition, that the introduction of this ordinance passes and we'll hear it again next month. Going on to item number 18, public hearing, introduction ordinance adding the new section of 10.16.0.0 prohibiting overnight camping or sleeping in motor vehicles or trailers. City manager will introduce this ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is an ordinance that prohibits overnight camping within the town limits on public and private property. It's recommended the council introduce the ordinance and direct the city clerk to file notice and schedule a public hearing for the next regular meeting, which would be the November 20th meeting. The ordinance is in response to a local incident that occurred, there's about five or six times that the police had to go out and address the issue, and in addition, it's been a regional issue, labor and communities have brought it up recently as well. When that came up and the local enforcement issue came up, the police department recognized there's no local enforcement mechanism, this is that tool in the toolbox, it's recommended the council introduce it and direct the city clerk to file the notice and schedule a public hearing.
Okay, council, do you have any technical or clarifying questions for staff before I open it up for public comment?
I can wait till...
Okay, let's open it up for public comment, any members of the public want to make a comment on this? Yes, sir?
Good evening, I'm James, resident in the city of Palo Alto, also a retired deputy public defender in Santa Clara County, and I've, for the last two and a half years since July of 2011, been working very closely with the city of Palo Alto in hopes that they would not pass an ordinance, and I gave to the city clerk with council's permission a letter that I wrote, the city council members this morning, I hope that, or the, that I wrote this morning, as well as a piece that I wrote back in August for the Daily News, the spinoff of the Mercury News, and I would hope that before the public hearing, you would read and consider some of the points that we've raised. As far as it being another tool, when I was a young public defender, the penal code was probably about an inch thick, and now it's probably closer to three and a half inches thick. So, there's plenty of tools out there, when I read the article and the comments from your city manager about needing another tool in the toolbox, I looked at the hypothetical that was given, that there was a person seen parking in the area, and ultimately, that person was allegedly seen on somebody's porch, and I think that's where we want to look. This penalizing someone for their economic status, I think violates lots of provisions of the California and the United States Constitution. On the other hand, we have a tool for somebody trespassing on private property, 602 of the penal code.